Up first on the work session agenda is the Arts Alley Project update and discussion of artwork with Paige.
All right, good afternoon, guys.
Hi Paige.
We, I believe we have some slides that are attached to this. So what we're kind of coming to y'all here for tonight, we've got some mural opportunities during the Arts Alley project we've got going on for the revitalization for the in and around the parking garage. So separate, just a little back, backtracking, separate from our federal grant, y'all know that Single Tax Corporation has decided to select Bruce Larson to construct the Seahorse Gateway Structure on Church Street entrance down there. So kind of in combination with that, we really kind of wanted to create something on a lot of these blank canvases that we've got throughout the project, something eye-catching, something colorful, unique, works of art throughout the project. So we have actually a Verip High School alum who reached out to us on the website and said we would, she would love to, you know, partner with us on this project. So we got her to kind of put together, we were like, you know, show us your ideas, show us what you've got. So what y'all see, I think in y'all's packet, saying in the PowerPoint slides, are just some of the ideas she had for the project. The two areas that we want to discuss with y'all that we think are most important would be that elevator shaft which is on the Hampton Inn side of the wall right there off of Section Street. And then we also have a trash corral that we're kind of calling it, towards the church side entrance that is kind of a blank canvas as well. So we've got some of those ideas, we'd love to kind of have y'all's input on that and kind of see some direction on what y'all would like to see on those particular areas on the project. So I'll just kind of open it up and see if y'all have any input.
Trying to pull up my email, I don't see, are you gonna, are you gonna show it on the, there's one folder, one binder, I mean.
You don't have it?
I've got it in my email, I just have to find the right email. If you put, I've looked at them online, but if you, can you pull them up here?
I thought we had sent them over, you don't have them, John? Please do.
Yeah, yeah, come on, come on, y'all come look at these.
So I've looked through these.
I have them and I can.
There's three different options, right?
It's in the packet.
Yeah, I thought so.
This one.
All right. I've got one copy here if y'all want to look at it.
I thought I could rule that one out, I don't know why. I like this one.
There's still some more, don't, don't. There's that one, I don't like that one that much. That one's all right.
That was too, that looks too cliché.
Can we forward it to you real quick, John, so you can throw it up there? On this computer, so probably not. Oh, okay. Well, I think John said it has to be on this computer right here.
I like those two the best, they're very similar. One's got the crab, one's got the pitcher plant.
I just kind of like, I kind of like the halo behind them. I kind of like this one with that.
Okay.
One and five.
On the, on the, and so, and so Councilman Robinson, Council President Robinson said that if you could take the sun and that blue sky and put it behind five, you like that?
Okay.
I did say that.
Yeah, they're very similar, they're very similar, but except for that sunset part of the first one.
Yeah, the five has the crab and the flounder, which we thought was more also iconic, more so than a pitcher plant.
And she's definitely looking for input, you know, she wants, like, this was just kind of a jumping off point for her, for her to get some direction on that. So we could definitely go back to her and say, look, we like.
She draw five with the sun, whatever that is, sunrise, sunset, sun.
Okay.
A sun.
And then we also wanted to kind of get input on the trash corral, the mural number two, proposed idea, and that one's kind of more like a photo op for tourists, for citizens, because it's on the ground floor of that parking garage, right there, near the new restroom facility.
We like one, the classic.
We like the postcard, yeah.
Those are the two options, yeah, I like that one.
And I will say, I think we were all kind of on the same page, too.
I think we were on that.
Christian Royce, who's been leading this project, too, with CPLA, had also kind of had the same thoughts and ideas as y'all as well. So we just kind of wanted to see what y'all's thoughts were on that. And also, Mayor wanted me to make mention that I think there are some community development funds through AMEA that we have left remaining, about $10,000 that we could use towards these murals. And then I believe in my '23 budget, we still have some, some money set aside in tourism that we could put towards this if we wanted to get going on it and put a resolution together for the next council meeting. So that's totally up to y'all.
Do you have any idea how much this project will cost?
Yes, I think, I mean, I think she's kind of hesitant to throw out.
A number.
A number. I would say, I mean, based on like the square footage of the first one, you're probably looking like 10,000 to 15,000, and the smaller one maybe five to eight, five to seven.
Have you gathered some money already in your coffers?
Twenty to 25,000.
Yeah, yeah, I would say that's probably pretty accurate.
I think you're looking for that kind of stop, photo op space where people will take pictures and hashtag Fairhope.
Absolutely. And she's done a lot of murals around town and illustrations around town. I mean, she has assured us that she has a particular way she seals things and preserves things so that they're, you know, very long-lasting. Again, I think it's pretty cool, too, that she was a Verip High School grad, moved back down, went to, I think Savannah College of Art and Design, moved back here, and she's actually worked under Bruce Larson for a little bit and kind of interred under him. So they've kind of spoken, you know, with his vision for that gateway structure and our vision for this mural that can kind of collaborate with each other and kind of mimic each other and be cohesive across the whole project. So, okay. Well, if that sounds good to y'all, we could probably put something together maybe and get some prices from her and maybe potentially move forward.
You want to see if you can just copy and paste that behind that?
Yeah, I mean, will we get some sort of new idea of what the drawing's going to look like?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. I mean, she, she's waiting on go for us, for some direction, so we can potentially get those back to y'all and see if she can get that sunset on the back. And if y'all are willing to move forward with that, we can.
Thank you Paige.
No problem.
All right, moving along, we have discussion of the Triangle Master Plan. Welcome.
Hey.
Small crowd today. Good to see y'all, thank you. Christopher Grant with Thompson Engineering.
Rebecca Bryant with Watershed.
So we formalized our presentation, we're not using the Miro app this time, so hopefully that'll help you guys. And then one of the requests after we left last time was to prepare a preliminary cost estimate. We will not be presenting that today, but you all have that in your packet that we can go through. I'm going to pull up our presentation. And we're going to run through this relatively quickly because we have presented most of these items to you all and want to have some time for discussion and present the final master plan to you all.
Focus on what's changed and evolved.
Yes. So again, protect, preserve, enhance and restore Triangle Park. You all know our project partners on this team, it's been very collaborative, our program, this is our design elements that we have to achieve based on the Go Mesa grant, we've discussed this previously. But I did want to review the goals and objectives, we finalized this with the steering committee. The first one is to protect, enhance and restore existing native plant and wildlife habitat, provide passive recreation and educational opportunities for all citizens and visitors of Fairhope, reduce impacts to the existing Fly Creek watershed, provide connections to the nearby Eastern Shore Trail and adjacent 36 acre adjoining parcel, and implement low impact development and sustainable design techniques.
Well, and just to dig in on the second and the last ones, these are sort of opportunities to address city priorities. So, you know, in the comp plan, one of the things that was pointed out is that there are not a lot of places for people to just walk in nature. I mean, we have, we have great sidewalks and walking trails, but not wooded, the kinds of places that people played in when they grew up here. And then the, you know, with the final one, it's a chance to sort of demonstrate the LID techniques that we're encouraging or we want to see developers utilize in the city.
Definitely. We presented these historical aerials, I think the biggest takeaway from these is the old 98 road that used to bisect the property, and we've implemented that in our design elements of the overall master plan. As y'all know, we have 72 acres to the north and 36 acres to the south. For the purposes of this project, we are focused on the 72 acres to the north.
There did seem to be some public comments that people were confused about that and that the 36 acres are more focused on active adventure experiences outside, while the 72 is the more the, I don't really like the word passive, but it's just quieter, slower experiences in nature on the 72 acres.
And the biggest element on the 72 acre piece is that we do have Fly Creek to the north adjoining the property. As you all know, we've had a series of steering committee meetings, lots of design workshops, council presentations, we've done a lot of site walks, we've got, this is Mr. Art Dias who used to live on the property, show us around, and it was very good and informational, and then we've done walks with foresters as well, and then the project team. We won't go through all these site photos, you've seen a lot of these.
If you have questions about something, stop us.
Yeah, please do.
I was going, can you go back one?
Sure.
The top right-hand image, we wanted, there was some chatter on Facebook after the last presentation that we had used the word amphitheater to describe really what's an outdoor classroom in an existing ravine on the site. It is, it is not large, you know, it is maybe 20 feet wide and maybe 50 feet long. It's that depression that we think is a historic borrow pit, but it sort of mimics, it's like a microcosm of the gullies in Fairhope, that's what's in the top right.
And we have renamed that the outdoor classroom.
Yeah.
For clarification.
There will not be concerts held there.
No red rocks there.
Yeah, maybe small ones.
The existing conditions, y'all have seen this map, but the key takeaways is we have 100 feet of fall across the site, really analyzing the existing slopes and buildable areas, and then looking at those existing trails and logging road that exist on the site. And then in the top left, you can see where the former Dias house is located. Site analysis and inventory, we've reviewed this, but, you know, really looking at buffers and noise and view sheds, and then habitat types. So this was all, you know, driving our design decisions that we made, experiences.
But this is sort of our approach, instead of just looking at where you put trails, we were trying to think, we both use biophilic design principles which look at how people respond to certain types of environments, and you try to look for ways to heighten their experience. So we were looking for, you know, where you can look out over something and have that sense of prospect, where there's a sense of, you know, mystery and awe, or like incorporating a bridge, it gets people's attention, they kind of refocus on what's there. And then the gully, the prospect, balancing prospect and refuge is the reason people like corner tables in a restaurant, you feel protected, you can look out. So we were looking for those kind of physical characteristics that help to make a memorable experience in nature, and that's what, that's how we located many of these trails and many of these amenities on the site.
Noise, we've talked about this, just really, you know, where are you buffered from the traffic noise from Highway 98? There are areas within the site that you can seek that refuge and that peace and that calm, especially kind of in the middle and along the creek edge.
And once you come around the bend from, from 98, it quiets down a lot.
Can I go back to that? Just curious on that. I've noticed that the least traffic noise is next to the highest traffic noise. How is that?
Well, and this, this is not a scientific study, but it's the contours, when you come around, the land kind of turns back.
Yeah.
So you just come over a bend from facing 98, and all of a sudden you're facing away from 98, not, not at a, you know, 180 degrees, but coming around that bend, it, it drops off a lot. And again, it's not scientific, so there could have been, when we were out there, maybe the traffic dropped off a lot of this. But, but every time we came, we followed Fly Creek and we, we came around from following 98, and then we turned the bend in the river, you could tell, you know, the sound just really dropped off.
Habitat type plays into that, too, you know, it may be more dense in that location in terms of tree cover.
If, if there were landscape crews in the neighborhood, now, you know, you turn the bend, 98 goes away, if everybody's leaf blowers are going, you can hear those.
Right.
So it's, but buffering 98 is a big deal. I think this was covered last time, just to show you where our, where, what we're using for inspiration for shelter, just not, no one of these is what it's going to look at, look like, but we're looking at how it can frame views, maybe enhance the way that rainfall, you know, what happens when rain falls over this roof, how we gather it, can we make that an interesting experience? Reference kind of the primeval hut, you know, what make you feel like you're outside in nature, this is a hut, a shelter. We'll have, when we have a design to show you, we'll talk more about it, but that's where we're starting. And we talked about, you know, the materials for these buildings are going to be subjected to maybe, maybe fire, you know, you're in a fire managed, you're in a fire suppressed longleaf forest where fire's a hazard. So we're looking at fire resistant materials that are also termite resistant, you know, like concrete, heavy timber is fire resistant, corten steel, also materials that will, that will weather nicely and get a patina, not just look old and tired, you know, that'll look more interesting as they age.
And also stand up against vandalism and things that occur, you know, in public properties. I'm not going to go through all these, we've really looked at a lot of these, but just kind of give you an idea of images that we used as precedents as we moved forward, so trailheads, site features, landscape, outdoor education, site amenities, parking lots, and really, you know, how do you get a parking lot and make it not look like a parking lot in the woods? So we've started to design these, being conscious of that, and materials as well.
Yeah, and not create a bunch of runoff.
Bird blind concepts.
That'll be a lot of fun.
Signage, not just directional, but interpretive. And Rebecca and I were talking, since we've met last, we did some site visits, we went to Red Mountain Park and Oak Mountain Park in Birmingham, and the importance of signage, I got lost multiple times. Also, there was a lot of vandalism to signage, so starting to think about longevity and materials, things like blazing, which we haven't talked about, you know, just understanding where you are in this landscape when you're covered up by trees, so people feel safe.
Just to explain what that is for, I mean, you're a Boy Scout, or maybe we have a lot of, anyway, the, yeah, the most primitive kind of trail marker is just a little piece of paint on a tree, you know, just so, there's, there's times when that just makes it feel like a cooler experience, you know, when we've, we hiked Cherokee Bluffs with our kids at Lake Martin, and for them to find a cairn or to find a blaze on a tree, they felt like they were like foraging through the wilderness, you know? So some mix of interpretive, more, you know, some mix of those on the different kinds of trails, the more primitive trails might have more primitive signage. And we even, you know, some, for whatever reason, we've even seen the vandalism happen at Gulf State Park on their trails, and when things are all out in the woods, they might be a little more, more vulnerable. So there's some balance of the more permanent pieces and then pieces that are more easily replaced, if they have to be.
Sculpture, we talked about this, just unique design elements within the landscape, something that you can discover in the woods, also incorporating our community and people that do art installations like we just saw with the murals.
And, yeah, we have such a great tradition with Craig Sheldon and just all of the artists in our community, but also looking at how, how art could highlight the changing of the seasons or the way that water moves across the landscape, or could highlight something happening in nature to help people, art can be part of education.
So this is our final master plan that we have, and I'll maybe, I'll go back to a fuller scale size here in a minute, but some of the key takeaways that we've incorporated into this plan, we went back to the steering committee, we did additional site visits, and, and one thing we heard is that it's going to be very difficult to manage not having passive bicyclist on this. So we have opened these trails up to multi-use trails, so running, walking, biking, and the, the one area that we are going to seclude from that is going to be the primitive trail along the creek's edge, because that's the most sensitive environment, especially as it relates to erosion. But we're also going to try and manage that through trail widths, which we've defined for you all that we can look at, as well as signage and really education, yeah.
What, what we heard from bike experts and then all the different precedents we revisited is you don't want to, you don't need to manage who's allowed on the trail as much as you need to manage their behavior. So we want to encourage, these are slow trails, they're skinnier, you know, there's not like a big exciting up-down straightaway, so, and have signage that encourages proper etiquette, you know, bikes yield to pedestrians, yield to baby carriages. If a biker sees that, you're not going to attract an adventure biker, if they're thinking there's a lot of baby carriages. So trying to, trying to encourage good behavior, neighborly behavior, sharing the trail, and then, you know, not making them all highways, so that it's not encouraging speed, seems like it serves more people better.
Yeah, some of the other things we did incorporated into this is we, we actually, we had somewhat of a grid pattern going, and we added more undulation to the trails, which actually gave us more distance that we could capture in trail lengths on the site, but also to allow for a better experience while you're on the trail, that you may come around a bend and discover something different, or this trail will then connect with a different trail at another location. So we've, we've added a little bit of length to the trails, but I've been very conscious of where those fall within the environment.
So the, I'm kind of saying the same thing in a different way, but, but it also gives you a little more richness of experience. So the wide, the carriage trail or the wider trails, you might have people going side by side, you might have a big group, you might be louder. On the more primitive trails and the skinnier trails, if you're on a two-foot or a four-foot wide trail, you're probably going single file, and you're probably going a little slower, and, you know, mulch versus compacted asphalt, not asphalt, aggregate.
Yeah.
So trying to give, it's not, it's not a huge area, but in 72 acres, trying to give a wide variety of experiences, so you kind of choose your own adventure.
So I'm going to probably, let me pull out of this and pull up this image, just so it's a little larger on screen, we can zoom as we need to.
Can you guys have a fold out, you should, in that?
The back of your packet, yeah. So I just wanted to kind of define some of these trails for you, since we've looked at material types, you know, what's the surface, what's the widths, and then what's the distance? So this red trail here is the Carriage Road Trail. Again, this pays homage to the historical Highway 98 that used to be there. So we will have two lanes at three feet wide each, which will give the precedent of that old, you know, type of road that runs through there. It's .25 miles in length, and just to kind of give context, we've got a total of three miles of trails shown in this plan. And this will be a compacted gravel surface, so we'll, this also allows for emergency services to enter into the site a little further, so that's why we're looking at, you know, different material types for that trail. The multi-use trails are blue, and, and all the trails are multi-use now that we've defined that, but these will be three quarters of a mile, so .75 miles, five feet wide, and a compacted mulch surface. So the compacted mulch surface will actually allow us to have ADA accessibility throughout the trails. The primitive trails along the creek edge are, we've got a quarter mile in length, that is going to be two feet wide. We want this to be a very narrow, least intrusive trail along the edge. There's actually an existing trail there now that probably feels like it's about two feet wide.
Yeah, it's just, there's some tree fall from Sally that kind of blocked it in a few places, but it's the, the wildest and probably the most sensitive area. So that's, that was the one area that we said, you know, no bikes in this area, and heard back from the biking community that it's, you know, especially if you're explaining, like this is a sensitive area, no bikes allowed, the people tend to respect that, especially when they know why. If they don't just see a no bike sign, it doesn't tempt someone to break the rules.
Yeah, and the material surface for this will just be a natural mulch, it will not be compacted. The difference you see in this blue area getting to the outdoor classroom is we do want to provide a compacted mulch surface so that allows an ADA accessibility to that first outdoor classroom.
And that, we, the graphically shown the waterway a little more, a little more clearly in this one, so that, just for reference, because I heard there were concerns after the last meeting, the edge of the, of Fly Creek is 100 feet from this trail. And it's really based on the existing trail that's already kind of a, been, been established through foot traffic.
It's 100 feet from the primitive trail?
It's 100, no, the primitive trail's 100 foot from Fly Creek.
Right.
Yes. So it's outside of every, you know, definition of good, good practice for, for water buffers.
Jack, on our previous presentation, we had some of the, the watershed buffers and the habitat types shown, so we went back and just showed the actual waterway, so that gives you a better idea of the buffer.
But it gives great views of the creek, and it's just not, you're not on top of it.
The corridor trail, this is the, the actual, the old former logging road that runs through there, so you may, there's probably a 15-foot clearing, but we're proposing an eight-foot wide trail there. It's a quarter mile long, and that will also be a compacted mulch surface.
So that makes a loop with the, the blue trails, you know, it gives you a full loop of experience past the longleaf, sort of kind of up the hill to the top and back around.
And it also allows for a loop for ADA accessibility back to the house. The intermediate trails is 1.25 miles in length, we want these to be three feet wide, so you still have a narrow experience as you run through there.
Those are the yellow ones?
That's the yellow, and that'll be a natural mulch surface.
And those, obviously all this evolves as it goes through design development, but then also we envision in the field, you know, that, that they would use these, our drawings to stake it out, and we go out there with the contractor and say, this is a great tree, let's go around it, you know, so it's really responding to the site.
Yeah, there was no way for us to feasibly do an entire tree survey of this property, so there will be some movement of these trails to avoid conflict areas as it relates to habitat.
Which will just make them more interesting.
Let's see, I'm going to go, I'll go back to the presentation. So these are just some zoomed-in areas, we can talk through these in just a minute. But I did want to tell you about kind of the next step, so we would, you know, obviously receive any comments from you all, and we want to move straight into design development drawings. We're trying to complete those by October timeframe, and that'll get us to 60%. We have a lot of work to do to get to there. This, this front-end master planning process has been very important and very helpful, which we spent more time on just to make sure that we were getting it right, so we've got a little bit of catch-up to do. Thompson Engineering just completed the Eastern Shore Watershed Management Plan through Mobile Bay NEP, so there are some projects that'll come out of that. There will be some funding that could potentially come through that. So we're trying to coordinate a fair amount of that with the Eastern Shore Watershed Management Plan. As y'all know, the Fly Creek repair, the culvert repair project is, we're doing an alternatives analysis for that project through ALDOT, coordinating very closely with the city. So that will all impact and need coordination with our project as well.
Can you share what one of the alternatives is, or no?
Not yet.
Okay.
We're also looking at, one of the comments out of the last council meeting was the master plan for the 36-acre parcel. We actually have a meeting with a sub-consultant on Wednesday of this week with the city to look at the more active recreation opportunities over there and start planning that.
And, sorry.
Go ahead.
And maybe make it a little friendlier to people who aren't quite, you know, who aren't like me, who are not quite ready to do that half-pipe.
Yeah.
But I could certainly bike around and watch somebody else do it.
Yeah, good point. We know, you know, with the former DIAS house sitting vacant, Rebecca recently did a walkthrough with Art. We need to prioritize that and work very closely with the council and the city to understand what that will become and what it will take to get it restored.
I think there's some great, I mean, it's a great place, you think there's some, some really cool opportunities, easy opportunities to showcase things like, if the city's encouraging water conservation, well, you could very easily show people how to do that at their own home in this, you know, now interpretive space, now meeting space, because it was designed as a home. So it's got, it's got great potential for nature center offices, meeting space, and a demonstration site.
As y'all know, we're coordinating very closely with Volker for the construction of the roundabout, trying to get the timing of our tunnel construction to get to the 36-acre site so that there's not two different projects going on at different times where we have to close roads and change people around. And then next week, we'll actually be visiting with ADC and our director, Chris Blankenship, on Triangle Park. And he's very excited about the project as well. So lots of great opportunities, lots of coordination going on and ready to move forward. This is the end of this presentation. You all have our preliminary cost estimate in your packets. And so if you have any questions, then we can certainly visit some of that as well.
Yeah, I just want to just kind of talk to the council for a moment. And I made no bones about it, and I'm not going to make any bones about it now, is that I don't like the kayak launch. I think it's invasive to the creek. The creek's not navigable back towards 98, and so it's going to push people.
Yeah, it is.
I don't think you can get a kayak up there, you might can go 50 yards.
We've gone up with our kids to the, I mean, I don't mean to go, sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah.
It does bring a question, though, is if it, is part of this project going to clear it out some? But even more so, even if it is navigable, and then that, the portion of it back to the bay, there's, except for the park itself, there's residences on both sides of that creek.
Yeah.
And I think that people aren't speaking up. I've had several emails because they know I live in that area, voicing opposition to a kayak launch. We have, we have an existing kayak launch at Fairhope docks that we've had for several years now. And I just worry about the damage, I worry about the noise, the intrusion on people's private property, and I worry about the destruction of the creek with a kayak launch there. And that does my reasons to oppose it.
All right, and I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to argue back with that. That's not, it's not critical to the success of this project by any means. We had heard a lot of voices in support of it. And I, again, I'm like, I'm a redhead.
Where did you hear them?
At the steering committee meeting.
Did they live there?
Well, I mean, there's, do we let the people who live there decide the park that's for the public? So I, but I have kayaked up there and paddleboarded with our kids several times. There's an area where people, like Zach Syracuse, used to dig for clay up there. It depends on what's happened with trees recently and how high the water is. The only, again, I don't, and Art said people used to put in all the time. So it's, it could be used, it's not, nobody's going to die on that hill. But the reasons it was in there were that it's a little bit easier, if somebody wanted to put in there and take out at the bottom, you could get somebody who's maybe not a great paddler.
Well, before, before it gets a toehold, I'm trying to take it out right now, that's what I'm trying to do, just be frank about it.
We're just trying to balance everybody's opinion and then figure out how.
But I'm one vote, but that's my, my strong opinion on it. I don't think it's going to do good. And even as you said, we were going up there to collect clay. Do we want people digging into the clay banks and taking the clay out of the creek?
No, we don't, and I shouldn't have probably said that out loud, but.
I mean, that's not what we want.
Yeah.
So anyway, those are my reasons for opposing that. And then one last comment, Councilman.
Yeah.
I know that the mayor probably contacted y'all about some naming of this. And I like the, as Barry Booth will be quick to correct you, that it's the correct Native American name of the creek is Flying Creek, not Fly Creek. Which is, the old swimming racket club was Flying Creek. And so I just thought that, like, Flying Creek Preserve or something sounds better than Triangle Park. Something, something that's native and something that's named after the area, not a, not a geometry. Sounds kind of harsh, Triangle Park just sounds harsh to me.
We've been waiting for some inspiration on the name.
That's going to be coming up, but I'll throw that out there for now.
Yeah, I think that sounds all right. Hey, Jack, can I mention something? Whether the kayak launch goes away or not, we will still need to provide access to this lower elevation in order to get into the bottom floor of the house. Otherwise, we're building an elevator to access the house from the two floors. So there is a lower parking lot existing there now, so we will still need this access drive to get back here.
Sure.
And in turn, I'm not speaking to the kayak launch, but in general, I think y'all already covered this, but the places that, where we designated for kind of stop and pause places along the trails, were all intentionally places where you're not looking at somebody's dock or anywhere near their house. You know, the people who live there don't want to see people on the trails, and the people on the trails don't want to see them. So we, you know, we tried to route it intentionally.
Well, and that's tough to balance.
You're looking at the woods.
Urbanism and nature, I get that.
Yeah, well, thankfully, it's pretty dense back there, so you're not looking at houses for sure. It's just the occasional somebody's beach.
Right.
Jimmy, Jack?
Yeah, so I've got a few comments. I mean, one on the naming, I like something simple like Triangle or Flying Creek Preserve. I like both of those. I think it's, it's something that people will immediately know what it is and it's simple. I think I'm good with either one of those, so good idea on that. As far as the kayak launch, I actually don't think it's a bad spot for a kayak launch. I mean, I know the neighbors probably don't want it there, but most of the folks that live right there don't want you to do anything to it. They just want all-natural. I'm certainly open to hearing, I think you made some good arguments for why not to put one there, but I also think it's a reasonable spot to put a kayak launch because people that are wanting to launch from the mouth, I guess, of the bay and come back upstream, for some people, that might be a long way to paddle. And then the last thing was, could y'all just go over one more time on the, on the bikable or the shared lanes? Because I, I know I had some concern earlier about, you know, it's one thing down there by the bay to have the, the shared pathways. But here, if you've got ADA, walkers, bikers, all on the same, what's the width of, what's the width of the sidewalk down by the bay? What's the width of the trail here, just so for comparison's sake?
That's a good question. I think your sidewalk by the bay, like, if you think of between Pier Street and Orange Street.
Yep.
You're probably.
Or do you mean the loop down by the pier?
I think it's six feet.
Okay, six feet.
It's six.
The loop is eight foot or is up, is up, sorry, are they both eight foot?
From Bell's Head and South, it's eight foot.
So that's eight feet wide, and we're talking five?
Yeah, five, and then even narrowed down to three in some instances.
Now, the three, the yellow ones wouldn't be bikable, right?
They could be, but they would be, so we looked at.
So right now, the only one that would not be bikable is the green?
Correct.
We looked at, we might even need to make field trips. We looked at places like UWF, University of West Florida, has some trails that are shared by woods, bikers, and people, where there's, there's not conflict, there's just a, there's an etiquette of how you are on the trail. And then the Red Mountain, Oak Mountain.
Yeah, there were some very narrow trails through there, and I did encounter bikers while I was there. And it was just, you know, get off the trail for a minute, let them come by. And they were much more active in those locations.
They had hills.
Right, the concept here is this, you know, there's, there's not a whole lot to, we're not creating ramps and jump. You know, this is, go take a ride in the woods.
It's a toodle around, we didn't, intentionally, we didn't really run the trails up and down, so you're not gaining speed, you're kind of toodling around.
I mean, I'm excited about having somewhere for the bikers, I'm not trying to rain on their parade. And I'm assuming they're seeing this happening on the north side and wondering how long is it going to be before we address the south side? What are y'all's thoughts on it?
No, I, I get what you're saying about the, you know, at least for somebody who hasn't encountered that and seen it firsthand. I mean, just thinking about a three-foot, three-foot wide trail and either a five or six-foot trail with bikers and walkers coming, coming together. I mean, just in theory, it sounds like it might be some congestion there, potential for run-ins. But at the same time, if that's something that has some history and some, some data, long-term other places without issue, you know, I'm, I'll trust the data if that's what it tells us, that that's an okay way to do it. You know, I know that if you try to limit these to biking only or pedestrian only, policing that will obviously end up being an issue. And nobody wants to be out there trying to police where somebody's riding a bike in these trails. But it's going to take the people that are out there, I mean, like you said, man, I think if, what you encountered, there's an etiquette that's learned and there's not an issue with it, I think it might take some time for us to learn that etiquette, maybe, depending on who's out there. I know I probably need some education on etiquette for sure, not just on the biking trail. But, you know, I mean, I, again, I'll trust what the data says on whether or not that's something that's a good idea or a bad idea. As far as the kayaks are concerned, I don't have, I don't have a big preference one way or the other. I mean, if there's, if there's a lot of outcry against it, then I'm like, I'm not dying on that hill. I don't really care one way or the other. I don't, I haven't heard anybody saying, by God, we got to have a kayak launch out there. And so if we don't, we don't, I just don't, I defer to the other councilmen who have a stronger opinion on that particular issue. But otherwise, I'm excited about this whole project. Triangle Park, I agree, it's a pretty generic, kind of non, you know, doesn't really wow me. You know, Flying Creek Preserve sounds a little better. I think, I think if we maybe had a little more discussion on exactly what we want to call that, and maybe, maybe it is that. Maybe it's something similar, maybe it's something a little more descriptive, a little more fair hope. I mean, I think that's a great start for sure. But, I mean, I think we'll have a little more time to discuss exactly what we want it to be called. But overall, I think y'all did a great job, we appreciate all the time and effort y'all spent on this. I know it's a lot of work to boil down to a 20-minute conversation, and we appreciate that for sure. And look forward to what it's going to be as it continues to move forward, for sure.
Thank y'all very much. One thing I wanted to comment, you know, we could certainly go through here and have six-foot wide trails that are, you know, much easier to pass, but we're.
I want lower impact, I think.
Very sensitive to the environment that they're placed in. And there are those variable experiences of you're on a narrow trail versus a wide trail. So we, those were intentional.
And I, I think I was one of the early voices who was really concerned about those interactions because of our experience at Gulf State Park. But those are with asphalt trails that are wider and they're long and straight. And I think it encourages the speed bikers because they're, they're smooth and they're attractive. So after we learned a little bit more, we're, I think the mulch, the surface being a little rougher and it not being somewhere where you, you know, you can't do a five-mile loop, you know, you're kind of short distances. And we can pull some more, we can share with y'all some of the precedents that we looked at, just to make sure everybody's comfortable with it.
I mean, that's something you can always change if it's not working out, too.
That's a good point.
Well, thank y'all for your time.
Hey, thank y'all so much.
Thanks for all the work.
I appreciate it. All right, moving along, we are now, item number three is discussion of proposal to apply for USDOT's FY 2030 Safe Streets For All funding opportunity to create a City of Fairhope Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. Hunter, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Want to go through it quick? So just, just briefly, kind of how we got here, the Safe Routes to School was grant program piloted in 1997. And until about 2012, you actually applied for a Safe Grants to School, Safe Routes to School grant. It was brought into the TAP through the NPOs. And as most of you know, on those, we can only apply for one at any given time. But just to show you some of the influence locally in Fairhope from that Safe Routes to School concept and those TAP grants, you know, here's some of the projects you've seen, familiar with, County Road 13, pedestrian trails, Twin Beach Road nearby that brought in sidewalks and crosswalks along 98. And on the, ironically, the east side of this property we're just looking at across 98 is this pedestrian bridge. Ongoing project right now with sidewalks on Fairwood Avenue and, or Fairwood Boulevard and Blue Island, just to name a few. Well, those, those are still applicable, and we can apply for those grants. But last year, there was, as part of the infrastructure bill, there was $5 billion set aside for five years. They'll open about $1 billion a year, and we missed the first year. But there is two components that they're providing funding for. One is a planning component with a demonstration, kind of trial and error on seeing if things work, and then implementation grant. I've got some details if we need it, but, you know, this is good for both, the NPO can apply, multi-jurisdictional, if we have a, something with a county or even Daphne to our north, or of course, we can apply ourselves. The planning and demonstration grants, this is mostly related to public safety, where the Safe Routes to School really was about complete streets, having multimodal transportation. This is now providing the safety component of that. And, and it builds on what Fairhope has been doing for years. I think we were the first city in the state to adopt a complete streets resolution. And then, of course, the implementation is the longer term and actually building some of these, these things. And, and that would be a year three, four, and five that we could apply for. One of the things that we found is if, if we have the action plan in place, we may be more receptive to get the, the grants in the future. So this comprehensive safety plan is what we're proposing to apply for a grant. Those are due by July 10th. We're, Michelle and Nicole and Richard and I were working on those, and the police have helped because it's about traffic accidents and numbers that you're looking at. But those are due, the application's July 10th. We would like to apply for $200,000. The, it is a 20% match, so that's $4,000 out of the city's coffers. And the award date is expected to be October. So with our budgeting, you know, kind of here, just presenting this idea, if there's any reason not to apply, it is going to be a lot of effort to just apply for the grant. And I know you can't vote on something, we're not asking you to, but if there's anything that you see hesitation on this, we'd like to discuss it now. But there's a lot of things that, in our trafficking committees, often times, we have a lot of things that we want to put in an action plan here. Which streets are appropriate for biking and pedestrian sidewalks, where they might not have them, and some are just too tight? What's our hierarchy we discuss all the time, that maybe we don't need speed control or it's a certain type of speed control? We want to wrap a lot of things up into this action plan. But if y'all have any questions, I think you got four of us here that can, can, between the four of us. got four of us here that can, can, between the four of us, we can answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Hunter?
Love to hit, thank you.
All right. Item number four is discussion of the FIT Court and Funding Opportunities.
Good afternoon.
Pat.
I was asked to present this, uh, in the work session, uh, a young gentleman in our community of, uh, Josh Turner, um, who is passionately wanting to revamp our fitness course. The one we have currently at, um, at Stimson at the tennis center is old wooden, um, really dilapidated wood that needs to be torn out and redone. Um, the rec board has looked at this proposal a couple of times. Um, basically, we can apply for a grant, uh, in conjunction with the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Alabama. The total material cost on this fitness course is $155,000. That's just for materials. The grant would cover $40,000 of that. Um, Josh is saying that he has commitments from Rotary Youth for just over 38,000. Um, basically looking, looking at splitting it three ways between Rotary, uh, single tax, and of course, us, the city. Um, he does, he does not currently have a commitment from single tax. He said he would be working on that. Um, also, uh, cost to be, um, involved in that would be the concrete, uh, an installation of the concrete slab. Uh, I'm estimating that to be about $12,000 cost in concrete. Um, and then the installation of the actual course, they recommend that, uh, professional contractor that they, uh, would suggest to us install the equipment. That's an additional $25,000 cost.
All right. So it's $150,000 to acquire the equipment, 25,000 to put it in, 12,000 for the concrete.
Correct.
All right. So that puts us at
So that would put us at
187,000. Is that right? Did I math right?
Yeah, basically 35,000 plus the 38,333.
Okay.
Would be the cost to the city.
All right. So he's got, and you say he's got four, so 40 grand and then 38, 40 grand in, in grant money, 38 from Rotary
Rotary.
Rotary Youth Club.
Now, is that from Rotary or from Rotary Youth Club?
Fairhope Rotary.
Okay. So that's 70, 78. So it's 111 back to us.
Yes.
And he's trying to get money from single tax to help out with that too?
That's what he informed me, yes.
So Pat, I had a, I had a call from Corey, uh, this morning. He was at the meeting and I, I had missed the rec board meeting. And he said that there was a lot of discussion about where this would be placed. They were, it was talked about. And I had thought when we originally talked about it, we were talking about the tennis center or, or South Beach Park. And I think he said you mentioned that. But then now the, uh, uh, now they're saying maybe at the Rotary Youth Club. And I had never considered it being placed there. No offense to them. We do a lot for their rec. But I kind of thought that not, not a lot of people are going to run down there. It's just not on the beaten path to go down there and, and workout. So it just, that, that didn't seem logical. So is there, is Rotary's contribution contingent upon it being at their club?
No, I didn't, I didn't. I was not under that impression. No. I think that was just a suggestion.
Just curious, just trying to
I think it's a different Rotary.
It's Fairhope Rotary.
Oh, it's Fairhope Rotary. Okay. Not, uh, well, they're not a part of the, uh, that was funny.
That's only Point Clear Rotary that sponsors the Rotary Youth Club? I thought they all did.
I thought they all did too.
Well, the Point Clear is Fairhope Point Clear Rotary Youth Club.
Well, there's Point Clear that meets at Lakewood. There's Fair, that meets at lunch at, um, Wednesday. And then there's Sunset. I thought they all kind of contributed to Rotary, to Rotary Youth Club.
That's what I thought.
Well, they probably, they probably do.
But anyway, you don't think there's contingent upon the location?
I do not. There, there were several locations suggested. Uh, Rotary Youth Park was one of them. Uh, Founders, um, somewhere in conjunction with the new track. Um, and of course, the tennis center and then South, South Beach Park.
So in the, and also told, I was told by Corey that the, and I believe you may have mentioned that the rec board recommended not pursuing this. And I, I kind of was surprised because I wasn't there in your discussion. One of the, uh, persons pointed out that they built one of these in New Orleans and it didn't work. But I don't know that that's the safest community to run around and try to exercise in. Again, with no offense if you're watching from New Orleans, but I don't know where it was or what the dynamics of that was. But I don't know if that's necessarily comparable. Maybe it is. Maybe they, they put it in a really nice place. It didn't get used. I don't know.
Right.
But, uh, it's, you know, but I was a little surprised that they didn't want to pursue it. Because I thought when it was first presented to us, we, we, we had had a good reception.
Was it cost? Was cost part of the reason that the rec board said no?
That was one of the reasons. They felt like we have so many other items to address. Um, some of the other things that I heard was, you know, the heat factor. Uh, not everybody wants to be working out, outdoors, uh, doing whatever in the heat, especially on a surface that could be hot, you know, a hot rubber surface like that. And the, in the, um, the metal apparatuses, you know, they, I'm sure they're going to be hot to touch. And, uh, that was some of the concerns that people had. My concern would be vandalism, uh, graffiti painted on it. Um, you know, we have that currently at the skate park. We have that problem all the time. So, um, some of the issues were maintenance, long-term maintenance. You know, what's, what's it going to cost to replace some of these apparatuses when they break? Um, so I, I see both sides. I, I, I think that a fitness course like this would be beneficial, uh, to our citizens if it was utilized. Um, the old wooden structures that we have out there now are very rarely seen used. But like I said, it's, it's old and in, in bad condition and really needs to be torn down.
Uh, I, I wouldn't mind having the city contribute a little bit to this, but I'd want to see a little bit more of where the rest of the money's going to come from. I don't know that I'm in love with this enough to commit 110, 115,000 plus annual maintenance and upkeep, um, especially considering the fact that the rec board said no.
And that's what it boiled down to for the rec board.
And so I, I'd want to see a little, a little bit more of a plan, I guess, from the group that wants this before I would feel comfortable moving forward.
Sure.
Do you have a preference where you think it might?
I, I mean, I, I'd, I'd, I think I'd prefer it to be somewhere where there's going to be some foot traffic, people that are exercising and going past it that may want to use it.
That's what I think.
Seems like you need to put it by the track or
That wasn't a bad idea.
Or over by the Stimson Field where it kind of is already.
Yeah, that would be, I mean, kind of my
But again, if, if the rec board's saying low priority and
Yeah, no, I would
we need to get more money.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would want the, I'd want the rec board to have another opportunity to look at this if they, if we got more information, just to get their input on it. Um, especially if they're saying what I'm saying, which seems like they're very insightful at that point.
There is a opportunity for sponsorships, as you can see across that thing, you know, with the artwork and stuff that you can put on it. You could, you could probably raise some sponsorship money that would help out with the cost.
Keep, keep your rules to yourself for now, Hunter. Thank you.
Well, don't come out to the baseball fields, Hunter.
Thank you, Pat. Appreciate it. All right, counsel, moving along here now. We are at, uh, the committee update section of the meeting. Jack?
Well, I, I guess that would be my rec committee update. The Airport Authority, uh, received, uh, two bids for the, the east side terminal. Uh, and they were, I don't have the exact number in front of me right now, but I know that they came in. Uh, they were, they were reasonable bids and that, uh, it was, it was within the budget. Uh, you know, the Airport Authority has to have, provide matching funds. And it was within what they had budgeted for, uh, for their funds. Um, had AMEA, uh, we had AMEA board meetings, uh, today. And, um, the financial outlook is pretty good. Uh, natural gas prices have remained lower than they were last summer when they spiked. And, um, so hopefully we're going to have, I'd say, I don't want to say it's cheap, but I would like to say, um, low-cost reliable electricity for the foreseeable future anyway. Is that, is that fair enough, Conrad?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Positive.
Is that it, Jack?
Yes.
All right. Jimbo?
I don't really have any, uh, updates. Just that the, uh, library board is, is continuing to work towards, um, raising money for Building for the Future campaign. And, and they're, they're closing the gap, uh, pretty, pretty well. So they may be coming to us with a request to help them get over the finish line in the budget cycle.
Okay. Um, uh, historic preservation, we, we've gotten a draft ordinance. Uh, it's been looked at, uh, by me. Uh, I think Marcus, you had a chance to look at it at one point. And then I think it's now with Chris to look at it again, just getting as many eyes on it as we can to, uh, dot I's and cross T's to make sure everything looks like it needs to look before we bring it back to council to talk about. Um, and so that's where that is. And honestly, I, I don't know that I remember all the other committees that I'm on. So if I'm missing your meetings, just send me an email. Um, historic preservation's the only one that stands out right now. So let me know. Um, all right. That's wrapping committee meetings. And then we'll go to department head updates. And you got something on the agenda? Come on up and we'll talk about it.
I've got, uh, item number 15. I put in for the police departments for the new building. Gets to, um, install internet service for, for that new, uh, annexed building for the police department.
Okay. All right. Any questions bottom? No? No. All right. Thanks. I said no. I guess, I'm guessing y'all would have said something if you had it. Wes, uh, Wes, you guys, you don't, is it on the agenda? Is it in front of you? Uh, Wes has an add-on request.
Yeah, that on number 19. Uh,
Do you have it on yours?
If you don't, I've got a
It's on yours. Okay.
Yeah, it's the, uh, it's the gas relocation on Highway 31 from the back entrance to the Eastern Shore Shopping Center to Coleman Lane at 3,800 feet. A six-inch gas main of the state, uh, is requiring us to relocate. It's a reimbursable project. Um, I came to you earlier about the engineering. This is the construction phase of that same project.
And so Wes, uh, we, we will have to front this money and then it'll be 100% reimbursed.
Yes, sir. 100% reimbursed.
Okay. Counsel, y'all got any questions for Wes on this? We've talked about, I think, pieces of this or maybe
We talked about
stages of it.
We talked about it back during the, the engineering phase, which is phase one. This is technically phase three of, of that project, which is the construction. Um, so the reason that we, the reason that we pulled it out of the overall road plan is so that we could have a little bit more control of who's working on our gas line. If, if it went kind of under the blanket roadway project, then, then it would have been a subcontractor, uh, contracted by whoever won the roadway project as a whole for the state. Um, and so we were a little hesitant to do that because we, we lose some control there of who's got our hands on their, on our pipeline. So we, uh, we went this route. And so that's kind of what brings us here today. And the state put a little pressure on us. Lisa worked with me and I appreciate that, uh, on getting this on. And, and you and I had a conversation about this. So I appreciate you, uh, uh, making arrangements for us to get this on a day to meet a, a state deadline that they gave us, uh, six hours for.
Do they, uh, are they going to be putting brand-new line in? And then I see removal.
Yes, sir. Well
So they're going to remove the old and then put in new guys?
It'll be a grout in place. So it's, it'll, they'll, they'll fill it full of grout, uh, so that, because they'll eventually pave over this, they won't remove the old line from the ground. They'll just, they'll just fill it full of grout and leave it in place.
Yes, sir.
It'll be a new line.
Jimmy, any questions for Wes?
Nope.
Jack, anything else? Thank you, sir. And if that does get added, assuming, assuming it does, excuse me, that'll be item number 20 on the agenda.
And, uh, I take the month of June off. I wasn't here two weeks ago. And I really only have one item that I can speak to. But Councilman Burrell sits on that committee and, and he can probably better discuss than I. That's number 19, the recommendations from the, uh, Street and Traffic Control Committee, as well as I will say that I support items 10 and 11 as well. Uh, that does intersect with public works. I do want to give you kind of update on a few things. Uh, I know that the mayor, uh, shared with y'all, y'all have had some discussions about looking at projects, uh, that maybe we can get knocked out, uh, this year. Uh, you may or may not recall, well, well, well prior to COVID, we had a, a, a contract that y'all had issued to look at, uh, pedestrian safety improvements within the central business district corridor, especially on Section Street. We implemented some of those with the crosswalks, but we, it kind of got put on the shelf with COVID because we didn't know what the economy was going to do. And one of them that was, uh, kind of a holdover dream that was budgeted as far as the engineering was to, uh, get the pedestrian signals and upgrade, uh, the intersection of Fairhope and Section Street. And I know when we talked about the Clock Plaza project that y'all have approved that's going forward, that that seemed to be a good complementary project. We went ahead and, and got that out on the streets. Uh, we got back a very, uh, good response. Um, and you will be seeing that in two weeks. Uh, I do want to kind of preclude, we, when we sat down with our electrical department about, uh, the controller that is existing there can run a new system. It can't run it to the, to the fullest effect of what the pedestrian controls can be. One of the, one of the challenges is, if you recall, the intersection there are turn signals. Problem is, it'll turn people into pedestrians, uh, because they're seeing a red light on their side. This controller, uh, does not have the ability to calculate that delay and, and allow the pedestrians to go or keep the pedestrians from going. It is strictly, uh, based upon the, 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 the cycle that the, the controller can do. So to, to, the, the, so we did ask for an additive alternate to look at replacing the controller and completely rewiring the whole intersection. So the, the two numbers you're going to see in two weeks is that the, to put the pedestrian signals in, relocate the mast arm at the clock corner to get it out of the walkway of the pedestrians and out of the ADA ramp. And to basically make that a pedestrian-controlled, safe intersection without the ability to eliminate the conflict at the left turn is 61,000. Okay? And that's the ped heads that have the countdown clocks and tells you when to walk, when, how much time you have to get through the intersection. It was the recommendation of Conrad and Ben Patterson that, that with the additional 50,000 to put a brand-new controller in, it'll do everything we want and going into the future, that we at least recommend that to y'all. So you're going to see a recommendation for right at about 111,000 dollars to, uh, completely upgrade the signal controls, the signals, and, and as well as add the pedestrian controls there. The good news is if that's too big of a bite, we at least can get the pedestrian controls in and it, it functioning at a, a relatively safe capacity at the 61,000 dollar cost. Um, also, just so you know, on the same tune, as you know, we, we've done the widening improvements at Gayford 98. They started on the signal work today. Pedestrian signals went in, uh, were starting to go in today. Throughout this week, they'll go ahead and put in the new controllers and the loops and all the detection units. So hopefully by Friday, that goes to be an actual smart intersection and working how it was originally designed. Also, uh, this morning, we've got our, all of our final clearance docs on the K-1 Center, uh, Bestis Abatement. And we've also had a walk through with the design team. So they've started the initial assessment. And they're hoping to probably sometime in July, be meeting with y'all, discuss where we're at, uh, where they think the budget leads us to, what are the options and choices there. Uh, Founders has been greatly hampered by weather. That's a site work project and it has been very, very wet the last two weeks. Um, do want to let you know, we are opening the bids on the Haven, uh, this week, uh, for that, uh, remodeling of the, the front portion. One of the things that, when that comes before you, we will include a rental of a temporary office, uh, trailer that will be set up adjacent to it. Uh, as you know, we're pretty much, the Haven is going to have to evacuate their, their finished office space in a month for us to remove that front facade and rebuild all that. And they do use one of those rooms as a kennel for the cats. So they're going to have to have a place to work out of it as well as a place to, to keep the cats. Good news that, that equipment is available on state bid list and it's not prohibitively expensive. But that was really the only way to make this project work and allow the Haven to stay really in business. The good news, this construction will not negatively affect the kennel portion with the dogs and things of that nature. And they'll have access and security there as that construction goes forward. And, uh, probably, uh, very important to all the folks that And probably very important to all the folks that work here in this building, we held the pre-construction for the roof project. The notice of proceed is going to be issued July 5th. That's the time it takes to get materials in and work should commence on July 20th. And we'll be coordinating in the areas that there is deck removal, we're going to have to coordinate with, if it's right over your office, we're going to have to make sure that safety and things of that nature are done. So a lot of things happening and moving forward and thank you for all your support and on that and hopefully we can continue to see good things happen in the city. Any questions?
Richard, while you're up here, since you did mention number 19, I did want to point out that that's actually four different actions there and three of the four are, were, you know, fairly nebulous, is unanimous. And the one about the removal of the previously installed speed bump, I know we've had some other people reach out to us. What happened was there was, there was, there was one citizen that came and said that they wanted it removed and that they had some support and they did. I mean, this email that says they went through a lengthy period of time with getting petitions and whatnot together to install that. I asked, was there a petition to remove it? And there wasn't, but I was assured that most people were in favor of removing it. But since that time, we've gotten some pushback on that. I think it was fairly easy when you don't get that pushback, but when you start getting it, you know, we're both on that committee and I just don't really know what to think about that one bullet.
Getting pushback on removing it?
Correct.
Yeah, my first question when I saw that on here was, did the people that requested it come back and ask it before it be removed or?
Yes.
It was-
Okay, it is the same people that asked for it first and want it removed?
One of, the person that was one of the key people, there were several, that asked for it is one of the people that have been very vocal in asking for it to be removed.
Problem for me was, they come forward with a petition and I said, if you got a petition, everybody that now wants it removed, I don't, we don't exactly have that, so.
Yeah.
You know, but is this just a minority of people that don't want it removed now? I just don't know. I wish I had a clearer picture on that.
Yeah.
And I think that's, I hate to cop out, but that's going to be y'all's decision and you know, it's, I kind of find the irony that one of the persons that demanded it the most is now the one that has been the most vocal to have it removed.
Well, I think that maybe when we get to that item, do we want to discuss table in one of the bullets?
Yeah.
Maybe so.
Until we get more information.
Unless there's people here to talk about it.
Yeah, maybe there are.
Right, very good.
All right, thank you, Richard.
Thank you all.
All right. Hunter, what you got?
Got a few, unless there's no questions, no need to talk about the final adoption.
Any issues with it that you see?
None from me. Y'all got any feedback?
Any questions for number five or for Hunter on number five?
Six on my agenda.
Yeah, six for Hunter.
Oh, you're not the public hearing on the package store?
No.
Sorry, my bad.
But I'll have an opinion if you want to ask. And then also 10 and 11, typically when we see a road for acceptance, it's only one resolution. This is Hilltop subdivision. It was, the first phase was built in the county. We just happen to be coinciding with expiration on those bonds. They're closed out, so we're accepting that from the county. And then resolution 11, or item 11, is a resolution to accept the Phase 2 improvements for maintenance period.
Okay.
And that's really all we've got, so.
Okay.
Other than that, it'll be a standard approval.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Conrad?
Gentlemen, I have number 12 and number 13. Number 12 was for electrical mechanical controllers to program and update all of our new and old devices in our substations. And number 13 is for surveillance, to purchase their software, to have all these updates. And both these items are budgeted.
And Conrad, that item number 13, is that a, is that a yearly fee that we're going to pay for the software?
Yes, sir. From the time we paid, we got one-year, one-year contract.
And Conrad, I can save us the time in the council meeting on number 12 and awarding the services to electric machine control. Is there a time period by which we could, what's the word I'm looking for, Jay?
Get an update to-
Just get an update on how, progress on how well that implementation is working. I'd be really interested in knowing how well that's working out for us.
Yes, sir. They can give you an update probably two to three months. Let them get in there and look at our devices. Like I said, we have some new devices, some that are old, so I'm not sure how long it's been since they've been updated. And like I said, they could probably give you a better idea in probably two or three months, what they get into it and see what they're up against. And I know we do, like I say, with our substation upgrades, we do have some new devices, so that won't be a big deal, but some of the older ones that we still have in our substations.
Yeah, I just think it's, you know, since we're changing, it's just time to ask the service provider what they see.
Yes, sir.
How the system's performing and what they need.
Yes, sir.
Jimmy, any questions for Conrad?
No, that's good.
Thank you, Conrad.
Thank you all.
Oh, yes, sir, come on up. Bless you.
All right, y'all.
Good, how are you?
We're 14. This is the headworks of wastewater plant. It's going to be the, all the repairs.
You want to tell them how much under budget it is?
That's just part of the budget, so that budget that was put in there for the entire headworks, this is just the screen.
Okay, well, sorry, I'm sorry for my, I'm sorry for my false optimism then, okay? Premature celebration.
I would like to say that since we're so far into the budget that we probably won't, but I won't be here, so I can't make any promises on that. That's the wear item. It's also, it runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and we do not have a backup, so it's the only screen, so it is the traveling screen. And this is the total rebuild, okay? Dennis, our wastewater plant manager, did a great job because he went beyond the vendor and went straight to Loyola. And since we're a government entity, we can buy direct. They're out of Canada, so we say, he saved us several thousand dollars by not going through the vendor markup. So I give Dennis an attaboy. We have a great department, you all know that, and they work very hard to save money and actually try to get the job done, so I want to give a good thank you to Dennis.
Sure, thank you.
Y'all have any questions on that?
14?
We good? And a sincere thank y'all for allowing the opportunity, allowing me to be here for the time I've been here and the opportunity to work with some of the best people I've ever worked with in my entire career. And I appreciate y'all, I appreciate Fairhope, and I really appreciate all these fellers back here and ladies, they've been great to me. I've always felt welcome to my time here and I appreciate it. I want to tell y'all sincerely, I thank you.
Well, thank you for all of your, your help and your work and getting us on the right track and getting us where we need to be, for sure.
Yes, I got agenda number 16 and that's just a little bit of housekeeping. We, you know, we started our internship program. We thought we were only going to do one intern. Well, we got two interns, so we're just using a vacant water tech one position for the duration of this program.
Counsel, any questions for Corey?
I always get worried when HR walks up.
All right, appreciate it. Anybody else? Chief? You've got 18?
18 and number nine. 18, everything looks good on the application for the liquor license. And on number nine, on behalf of the Parking and Authority Committee, they're just asking to amend the ordinance where they may be able to remove any member who misses more than two consecutive meetings.
Okay. They have a big problem with people not showing up to their meetings? Am I on that committee?
You're not on that one.
Yes.
Corey Martin asked, would you not extend that to the city council?
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
All right, the only thing I'm seeing left that nobody's talked about is seven and eight, which are just the change in sales tax and, or change in retention.
You might want to explain that so that, yeah.
We could talk about it when we get there, just briefly. And then 17 is the application of Blue Cross National Fitness Campaign. Anybody, is that as simple as I think it is?
That's the 40,000.
Oh, that's the 40, okay, all right.
Number five requires a public hearing because it's a package store, but it's an ABC license.
Okay.
And requires a public hearing.
All right, guys, well, we've got about six minutes till time to start. We're going to adjourn the work session, try to come back right at 6 o'clock to get started.